Good evening. Thank you for attending the October 28th, 2024, meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. Printed agendas are on the tables in the back for our guests. Or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link, select Board of Education, and follow the board docs link to our current meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being agenda item 6.01. The first set of comments is relative to agenda items 7.01 through 11.04. Please state the agenda items you're referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is agenda item 12.01. There's a signup sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Davidson is absent. Mrs. Libian?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. District highlights and recognitions, we don't have any. So next up, we have the superintendent's comments, Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you. Just had a few items to share tonight. First of all, it's hard to believe we're already in the second quarter of the school year. The first one has flown by. I just wanted to share a few items for our students. One, we have the One Westerville Choir tomorrow performing at the Alum Creek Amphitheater at 6:00 PM. I will be at the South Veterans Dinner, so I won't be able to attend, but I wanted to share that. It's a neat opportunity to catch all three of our high schools. Last week, I had the opportunity, along with many of our other administrators, to attend the IB Extended Essay Cafe. I know some of you were there as well. It was a really neat opportunity to talk with our IB scholars, our International Baccalaureate Scholars, who are researching various topics, give them some feedback, and help them refine their research. So that was an exciting opportunity. We have our next round of superintendent advisory coming up, and the students have asked to focus on college and career readiness opportunities and how they can learn more about the various opportunities available to them. And has specifically asked for ways to get that information from their peers as well. So excited about those opportunities and discussions with our students. And I just wanted to give a reminder that we will not be in session next Tuesday. It is a professional learning day for our staff, and some of our school buildings are used as polling locations for the general election. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have a safety and security report, and welcome Mr. McElroy. Excited to hear about this.
There we go. Thank you. President Meyer, Vice President Altman, Superintendent Hamburg, Chair of Marshall, and members of the board. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present to you about safety enhancements at Westerville City Schools. First of all, as I share information about our security enhancements, please note that some details must remain protected to ensure the safety of our students and staff. While I will provide an overview, certain specifics can't be disclosed publicly to prevent compromising our security procedures. So let's get started. Guess I should turn this one to. So this is our overview. So back in September 23rd of 2019, Scott Dorn gave a presentation to the board, and the title of that presentation was "Safety Planning Approach." And in that, he really talked about the initiatives, the security enhancements that need to be done in Columbus City, I'm sorry, in Westerville City Schools. And we have a continued commitment to that. Now, I want to talk to the board about, do you realize today that 50 million students across the United States of America got up today to go to school? 50 million. In Ohio, over one and a half million students got up today and went to school. And in Westerville, approximately 14 and a half thousand, 14.5, went to school today. 14,500 went to school today. And their families expected us to keep them safe, right? They expected us to keep them safe, along with education, et cetera, but we're here to talk about safety. And what I want to talk about is in that, what we've done in the district since 2019. You're aware that we've established essential elements of high-quality instruction, safe and inclusive environments. WCS staff are trusted adults who develop and provide spaces that are physically and mentally safe, values diversity and student authenticity. As a result, students are seen, heard, celebrated, and are able to thrive, grow, and take risks. I applaud the district for that approach. And I want to tell a quick story that makes this so important to me. Years ago, I presented at a school district in a different state, and we talked about safety. And during that presentation, I posed a question. Now, this was a group of law enforcement, fire, EMS, teachers, principals, administrators, nurses, counselors, et cetera. And I posed a question. The question was, what does your perfect school look like? After I posed that question, I divided the group into two smaller groups. One was law enforcement, our first responders, fire, et cetera, in one group. And the other group was the balance of the group, teachers, counselors, social workers, et cetera. And I gave them 30 minutes to draw a picture of their perfect school. Ready, go. So 30 minutes passed, and after 30 minutes, we reconvened, and I asked each group to select one person to show us, to talk to us, about their group's perfect school. First up was law enforcement. Again, police, fire, et cetera. Now, this changed my life. That group drew a picture of a big building, kind of ominous-looking, no windows, a machine gun on top of the school, a moat around the school, with a fire-breathing dragon in the moat, and a drawbridge to gain entry. Then the other group got up, again, counselors, social workers, et cetera, and they showed their picture. And there was a picture of a school with the sun shining on it, butterflies in the background with soft music, and the kids just dancing to music. And again, that's what changed my life. Because I realized, in this role, we have to find a way to bring those two beliefs together. And that's why I applaud this essential element, because we talk about the physical and mental safety to include values of diversity, et cetera. That's what governs my work. So, in Mr. Dorn's presentation, he identified these safety needs. Camera systems, doors and lock sets, access control, windows, safety film, duress panic buttons, signage, exterior door monitoring, communications, visitor management systems, exterior lighting, building modifications, and crime prevention through environmental design. That's a lot. But this information was based on a report, a final report, of the Federal Commission of School Safety and Partner Alliance for Safer School Guidelines. This was information that was listed in those two documents that school districts should have in place to ensure safety in their schools. So let's talk about these individually. First, our upgraded camera systems. We've installed modern camera systems in every school in our district. We average 25 cameras, this is internal and external, at our elementary schools, 50 at our middle schools, and a minimum of 100 at our high schools. And this is top-of-the-line camera systems that have network video recorder, the proper cabling, et cetera, and uninterrupted power supplies. So if the power goes out, our cameras still work. And those cameras can be monitored by front office staff, by our building principals, by our school resource officers, and others within the district to ensure they're able to look at the internal and external movement on our properties before, during, and after school. And they've been placed in strategic areas inside and outside of our schools. Next, access control solutions. Love the pictures. But we implemented access control for security reasons. Every staff member has an ID card, an ID badge, with their picture, and we can control the access that this card has at any door throughout our school district. We've also placed proximity readers at our entry points, so staff can use a proximity reader to gain entry into our schools. And if the badge is not programmed for that particular proximity reader, you cannot gain access to that specific door. Also, we've added the integrated video doorbell system. Many of you, I'm sure, have been to our schools, and if you go to the door and you can't gain access, you have to hit the doorbell, right? That doorbell system has a camera system on it and two-way audio. So our first front office staff can see who's ringing the doorbell, can speak to that individual who's ringing the doorbell, and decide if that individual should gain access to our building or not. So basically, if you have an ID and you have access to that door, you can come in. But if you don't, we try to make sure that we determine who should be entering our schools. We're also in the process of adding duress panic buttons in all of our schools. In addition to that, the district has invested in the visitor management system, the Raptor system. That system helps us to monitor individuals who have been given permission to enter our schools, but we ask those individuals to provide their government ID to place it in the Raptor system so we can determine if that individual is on the National Sex Offender Database. If that individual is on the sex offender database, myself, the building principal, our school resource officer, and others receive that information, and we assist front office staff and others to determine if that person is truly the person who is on the sex offender database list. We want to determine if sex offenders are coming into our buildings. Now, sometimes we may have a false positive. To give an example, we may have an individual, for example, by the name of Mike Smith, who's born on January 20th of 1999, who's trying to enter our buildings, and there may be someone in the system with that same name and same birthday. We will still get a hit, we'll still get notified, and then the system will show a picture of that individual, and we compare that picture with the individual who's trying to gain access to our school to determine if it's he or she or not. And if not, then the system will produce a badge that they can stick on their person and be permitted to go further into our schools. Again, we're also trying to address our duress button system, and we also have a visitor management system as well. Next, building and facility safety enhancements. We've installed secured vestibules in all of our schools, every one of our schools. In some of our schools, we have to change the entrance to our schools to make sure our vestibules are working properly. You see a few pictures of some of our schools. I love the bottom picture on the left where our staff have put, you know, plants, et cetera, to make it friendly, but we still are controlling access into our school. We also have installed push-button lock sets on all of our internal doors, so our classroom doors. So the locks on our doors can be locked from the inside by pushing a button, and they can be unlocked from the outside with a key. So for obvious reasons, that's critical if our teachers or others have to lock our classroom doors. We've also installed two-door locking devices, better known as TDLDs if you work in that industry. And that's for some of those internal doors, we have two doors. Say, for instance, a library. For example, the interior library door may be two doors, so we have to have the right system to ensure that that door closes and is secured. Next, our communication system. Our district has a communication tower on our property. And that communication tower governs our two-way radio system. So we have, some people call them radios, some people call them walkie-talkies, I call them two-way devices, but we can communicate in our schools. So we can communicate internally, you know, within the school from person to person. We can communicate from inside the school to the outside of the school. Our building principals can communicate to our transportation department and back. And also, our law enforcement have access to those communication systems as well. And members in this building have access to that communication system too. So we're able to communicate, again, at a small level in the building. We can communicate out to the playgrounds, and we can communicate across the city of Westerville. Many school districts do not have that capability. And we're also in the process of updating our PA systems in our schools to ensure reliable communications during emergencies. Exterior security measures. Now we're talking about one-to-one replacement of existing lights. We've not only replaced many of the lights, but we've installed smart controls on those lights, which helps with energy efficiency, cost savings, et cetera. And many of the lights have motion detectors on them, so at night, the light may be dim until something or someone walks past a light, and then, as you know, the light will brighten. Again, it helps with efficiencies. And we've added, shout out to our IT department, we've expanded our exterior Wi-Fi access points. So outside of all of our buildings, we have new Wi-Fi access points. Now, I heard the question, you guys asked me why, there's why. We've invested in the Raptor system. This is our emergency management system. This is the newest tool that we've invested in that has a mobile app for managing school emergencies. So every school employee who has a district email address can use this system, this app, on their telephone, their mobile device, on a Chromebook, and on their desktop. Now, this system does a number of things. But the two most important things are, with this mobile app, any person who has this app can activate an emergency. So if something is happening in or around our schools, and an individual has this app on their phone or on their Chromebook, they can activate an emergency. So if something bad is happening in the school, they can push that lockdown button, lockout button, et cetera, and that information will be communicated to all the other members in that building or those who are associated with the building, right? Also, during an emergency, our emergency management system allows us to track, account for, all of our students. So this system works directly with our student information system, Power School, where that information is uploaded daily or nightly into this system. So during an emergency, we're able to account for all of our students based on their roster. So if we're practicing a drill, or if it's an actual emergency, we can account for staff and students by utilizing this device. I feel that, you know, in the use of this device, if all of our staff are using it and using it properly, we can definitely prepare for accounting for our students during an emergency. Behavior threat assessment. Now, remember in our essential elements, we talked about physical and mental safety. According to state law, or Highway 53 code 3313.669 pertains to this, we have to implement a behavior threat assessment team in our schools. And it states that districts must establish policies for conducting behavior threat assessments. And we've done so in Board Policy 8400. And if you wonder what a behavior threat assessment is, I'll tell you. Behavior threat assessments are systemic processes used to identify, evaluate, and manage potential threats to safety in schools. What we're trying to do is to determine if a student poses a threat in our school. And sometimes, we'll get this information about a student. It could be through a social media platform. It could be information that comes to us through an anonymous tip line. Or sometimes, we just hear someone saying something that we have to really address what was communicated at any grade level. Here in Westerville, the RC states that schools must establish teams in grade six through 12, but we have great, we have threat assessment teams in all of our schools. And those teams are trained, and that information is reported to the state of Ohio. And those teams follow a process to determine if a student does pose a threat in our schools. We have other team members in this office and in the buildings that are prepared to help students who maybe are considering harming themselves or considering to harm someone else. Our school resource officers, better known as SROs. This district has a unique opportunity to work with four different municipalities. Many school districts don't have that opportunity. But we have officers assigned from Westerville Police Department, to Genoa Township, Minerva Park Police Department, and Blendon Township. To start with Westerville, Westerville has assigned five officers to our middle schools and high schools, and an additional officer to assist with our nine elementary schools. Now, we are, we do have a memorandum of understanding with Westerville, who will eventually provide us a total of three additional officers for the nine elementary in Westerville proper, but we currently have one because Westerville Police is having some staffing issues. But once that's addressed, we will have two additional officers for our nine. So it'll be a total of three officers for our elementary schools, and then an officer in our middle school and in our high school. Genoa Township has an officer in two of our schools, in Central High School and in Genoa Middle School. And those officers have therapy dogs, Maverick and Rocky. I love those dogs. And that's a unique approach to policing. Because, again, they're able to use therapy dogs in our schools to help address the needs of our students and staff, not just focusing on law enforcement. And now, those two officers also assist with Alcott Elementary and Faust Elementary. Minerva Park Police Department has one school resource officer who works in Minerva Park Middle School and also responds to Hawthorne and Minerva France. And lastly, but definitely not least, Blendon Township Police Department has one officer who works up to 16 hours per week at Huber Ridge Elementary and Wouter Elementary. So all of our schools are covered by police. And I love these pictures, and I'm a little biased, but that first picture, bottom left, that officer, he's probably about six foot four. And it is an amazing picture to see him interact with little ones. It is a beautiful, beautiful thing. But you see the pictures of our SROs and their dogs, and the interaction, and the relationships that they're developing with our students. Now, we know that there is a time, and maybe there's still concerns about school resource officers being in our buildings. So what we did a number of years ago, we created a school resource officer committee that focused on our SRO program to try to enhance the needs of our students and that interaction with our school resource officers. In that, the district hired a consultant, and that consultant convened strategy meetings with our students, with our staff, and our principals to address their needs, to hear their needs, and we added those concerns to our current memorandum of understandings with all four municipalities. We also have DARE officers in our schools. And DARE stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education. This is for the fifth graders in our elementary schools. So Westerville PD and Franklin County Sheriff cover all of our elementary schools. Westerville PD's DARE officer has a therapy dog as well. And Franklin County Sheriff is currently training a puppy to eventually become a therapy dog as well. So again, we're folding in therapy dog solutions to help our students and staff in times of crises. So in conclusion, since 2019, since Mr. Dorn stood and said amazing things, we've done a lot of work. And we know we have to continue to assess our systems to ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to do to make sure we're following the advice of our law enforcement and safety experts so that through these ongoing efforts, we continue to make our schools safer and more secure, ensuring that safety remains at the forefront of our priorities. I thank you, and I'm open to any questions.
I'm just wondering, thank you so much, Mr. McElroy. There's nothing more important than keeping students and staff safe. I'm wondering if you can just talk, for those who don't know, a lot of folks in our community are just in maybe one building or no buildings. Can you talk about the secured entries and how we had to reconfigure some of the office areas and stuff, and what that was like? Because, you know, we had some buildings where you went far into the building before you encountered staff.
Right, so thank you for that question. So there were a few buildings that we definitely had to reconstruct the entry to those buildings. And let's take Blendon Middle School as an example. We had to move that entry point from Blendon from one door to another, right? And office space had to change, but it flowed so much better. And you saw in, at the beginning of the presentation, it talked about SEP TED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Control. That's what it talks about, of moving areas and making it more comfortable for people to find that front door and move the office staff within the building to be easily recognized and easily accessible to those entering the building. Another one that comes to mind to me was Genoa Middle School. We made changes at Genoa, right? And we had to help our families understand the new door to enter. And there were a few others as well, but those are two that come to mind that we did have to make some changes, and we see a huge benefit. And I visit those schools, I talk to front office staff all the time. And it's, you know, they want to be able to see who's coming in. They want to be able to speak to people directly. They didn't want to be further back into the building. So those schools and others have been able to make those changes.
Yeah, thank you. It's, the technology piece of the secured entries is important, but also just that, I remember at Handby Elementary, you used to come in a back door off of that alley behind Handby, and you walked all the way up the stairs and then, like, past several classrooms. And that, we actually moved the office
Right.
so that you'd just come into the office immediately. And I know that took a lot of refiguring space in buildings and moving some other functions. So that was not an easy thing to do in some buildings, but I think it's really important everyone knows that that, some of the secured entries piece isn't just about technology, right? It actually required us to rethink how some buildings worked.
Thank you. I really appreciate this presentation. I know, having been in a lockdown drill myself, dropping off something to my daughter, they were able to track me down too. So I'm just curious about, like, you told us a lot about what we've done and some of the things that we're working on, but looking forward, and I know we've talked a little bit about this, but... But looking forward, and I know we've talked a little bit about this, but what are some things that we're thinking about looking forward?
Well, moving forward, we have to continue to focus on fencing around our schools. We have to apply SEP TED to our schools and make sure entrances make sense. We have to focus on determining if we need to add additional cameras in some of our schools. You know, we may have a couple blind spots, so we need to add a camera or two, two, and things like that. And, you know, sometimes we have to consider some of our cutting edge technology as well. There's other technology that continues to bubble up that may also be beneficial to the district as well.
Thank you.
Actually have a question along those lines. How often are the, like, the Raptor app and the technology? How often are those, like, needing updated or changed over?
Excellent question. So Raptor itself will, you know, as any other I T system does require an update. So if you open your phone and you have the Raptor app, you'll see where it asks that you update the app. And it's just like any other app that you may have. Like, I think my bank asks for an update like every other month, right? But it will ask you to update the app. And I think that's a great question because our staff have to be involved in the use of the app to ensure that they're updating it as they should. So then if it's needed for a drill or for an actual emergency, the app is updated and running properly.
What about some of the other kind of technologies? For example, the security cameras, you know, those tie into an interface, like how? I guess what I'm trying to get is what's the shelf life of those kinds of things? Like, are we having to replace them every so many years because they're outdated?
Again, another excellent question. I don't know the exact shelf life of our cameras. But I think on average, they're only some like five to seven years is my belief. But again, as I stated, we are always having to assess those to make sure that we're investing in the proper systems, that if we're changing a camera out and putting another one in, it still works as it should. So we're not investing in the entire backend as well, right? So myself and Mr. Stifler and his team, we look into these systems to make sure that moving forward, we're investing into the right systems, the right solutions. So when they do expire, when it comes close to shelf life, we're able to replace if needed.
Thank you.
I have another question. You talked about, excuse me, uninterrupted power supplies. So I know at times we're asked to power down, you know, for the grid during certain times of the year when the, there's a lot of power that's being used. So are those on generators? Those, is the unerupted power supplies, are those generators, or how are those different than?
So first of all, don't you love when that power goes out, when you're in the middle of something, and then you look up and the power's off, the lights are off, and you can feel the temperature going up? It's just what it is, and it really helps us in terms of efficiencies. But generators are in the majority of our schools, so yes, they are powered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. May, next may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? All right, Ms. Marshall, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
I'm gonna abstain since I had to leave early.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Next up is public comment, and we don't have any for that agenda item. So moving along to financials, may I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for September twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about this, please?
Yes, thank you, President Meyer, members of the board. So this month, we're going over September month and financials. And just a reminder, our fiscal year starts July first, so we're not that far into the fiscal year. For our general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of eighty-nine point seven million dollars and year-to-date expenditures of fifty-two point seven million. And we ended with an unencumbered general fund balance of a hundred and eighty point one million. And that was for the month of September for the general fund. And then for all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of a hundred and twelve million and year-to-date expenditures of seventy-six point three million. And we ended with unencumbered total fund balance for all funds at two hundred and forty-seven point two million. And that is all I have for you on that.
Any questions, comments? Tina, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio revised code fifty-seven zero five point four one D one and board policy sixty-three twenty?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about this too?
Yes, thank you again. So I believe we have three then and now purchase orders on this agenda, just double checking. So we had, I'm sorry, then and now purchase order is what we like to call these. This is where we have a purchase order that was opened after the date of an invoice. And so what we have before you tonight are two for Kaleidoscope Learning from the Career and Ed Tech Department. They did have a purchase order open. It was in the last fiscal year, and the invoice was not received in time for it to be paid with the fiscal year rollover. So that was also budgeted for this year to cover those expenses. And then one for Roy Agency from the Communications Department. We had this purchase budgeted for, but the timing with the transition of some changes in positions in our Communications Department, this purchase order was missed, but as I mentioned, all of these were budgeted. So I do recommend that the board approve them so that we can get them paid.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And can we take the personal consent agenda as one? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda, item eight point zero one through eight point eleven?
So moved. Second.
And welcome, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Ms. Hamburg. Tonight's personnel consent agenda consists of action items with regard to resignations, or retirement, leaves of absence, contract status changes, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. I have a pretty short report for you this evening, and that's just to recognize one of our staff members who has announced her retirement on this evening's agenda. Amal Doom is retiring after nineteen years of service to our district. So we appreciate all she has done and certainly wish her the best in her retirement years ahead. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. We don't have any old or new business, so moving along to standing business. May I have a motion to approve the donations as presented?
So moved. Second.
And we just want to say thank you to every, to all these amazing organizations, businesses, and members of the community for these donations.
Any questions, comments?
I did just want to make a note. We did update the prior year-to-date because we had a couple of donations that were reported from Westerville South Boosters. So that's been updated in the prior year total, but it's at the bottom of the list of these donations. But overall, very grateful for our community and their support.
Yeah, over three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. That's great. Great. Yep.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the overnight out-of-state field trip?
So moved. Second.
And welcome, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Ms. Marshall. We have one trip for you to consider this evening. A few of our students and student council at Westerville North are wishing to attend the Ohio Association of Student Leaders Fall Retreat in November at Flying Horse Farms via Saturday to Sunday event that they're looking forward to participating in. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just O A S L is a great organization for our student leaders, so glad they're getting the chance to go.
And we're excited for the opportunity.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the appointment of Courtney Zulo to the Westerville Public Library Board of Trustees to begin January first, twenty twenty-five and expire December thirty-first, twenty thirty-one?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about why we, even why we appoint this?
Sure. So under Ohio law, we are considered the library's taxing authority and, which means they have the same footprint as us, and that also means that the board appoints their trustees. So Ms. Zulo is replacing another board member, and if I could pronounce her name, I know Dorn can. I heard him say it the other day. Moich, yeah, Julie Moich, who's coming off the board. And so the Board of Trustees met on October twenty-second, and they're recommending this candidate for approval.
Any questions or comments?
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve resolution authorizing Meta to issue a R F P for the purchase of competitive retail electric service and authorizing the board to purchase the service?
So moved. Second.
And welcome, Ms. Dennis.
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Mrs. Marshall. The resolution in front of you this evening is authorizing the Metropolitan Education Technology Association, or Meta, acting jointly as a member of the Ohio School Consortium to issue a request for proposal for the purchase of competitive retail electric service from the lowest and best bidder submitted to the consortium and authorizing the board to purchase competitive retail electric service from such bidder. The billing cycle will commence in July of twenty twenty-five with an initial contract term of two or three years. It is being recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution for Meta to issue the request for proposal for the purchase of retail electric service. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Next up, we have public comments, and we have four. So the Board of Education welcomes public comment on educational issues of our interest to our school community. The Board does not discriminate based on the identity or viewpoint of the speaker during our public participation. However, the Board President may limit comments that are obscene, abusive, or harassing. In any attempt to protect the privacy, privacy interests of our students, the Board asks that speakers not identify students by name during their comments. Persons having public complaints about district personnel, programming, or operations will be referred to the process set forth in board policy ninety-one thirty. Finally, the Board reminds speakers that their statements should be directed to the board as a whole and not to individual board members. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screens. And Mr. Dorn will call time when five minutes has elapsed, and our first speaker this evening is Doug Krenski. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to start with a recap of what we've all learned from the proposed permanent tax levy over the last couple of months. The public forums, number one, we learned that the two thousand and nineteen enrollment projections won't happen and are wrong as opposed to the thirteen hundred more students we received. In the projections, we actually ended up losing eight hundred students. At forum number two, we learned that the test scores across all grades, all subjects have actually dropped ten to fifty-two percent over the last ten years, and the district is not where they want to be, self-admitted. Point number two at the second forum, the district keeps complaining about state funding. Yet, the majority of public schools are very happy with the current formula and how it's working and how they're funded. Point number three at forum number two, the two board members must really like me a lot because with over a hundred and fifty seats at the forum and only about twenty people there, they decided to sit right next to me, one to my right, one to my left. I emailed them the next day, and they said it was a friendly gesture. Yet, they didn't say one word to me when they sat there. I call it an attempt to bully me, to intimidate me into not asking more questions, stop my challenging of the numbers, and working to defeat the levy. I guess everyone can make up their own mind why they did it. But actions and words come with consequences. This type of petty behavior is childish, immature, wrong, and has no place in today's world. Forum number three, our percentage of kids with disabilities is lower than the state average, not higher. Point number two at forum number three, administrative costs are out of line. The district went up three point six million or twenty-six percent from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Westerville spent eighteen million dollars on fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty-three kids. Owen Tangi, as an example, spent eighteen million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand on twenty-four thousand one hundred and eight kids. If we did what Owen Tangi does, we could save six point six million dollars and save four hundred and fifty-six dollars per child in the district. The district continues to complain about state funding, yet the funding that they get apparently is wasted on administrative costs. We've also learned a few other things that, that can be seen on my Facebook group page, Westerville Levy Concerns. The board transferred thirty million dollars in voter-approved general operating funds to a new capital fund. If they really needed more general operating funds, why do they transfer the thirty million away from the general operating fund? Interesting. The two thousand and nineteen levy created excess funds because there's less kids in the district and they don't need more money. The five-year projections, salaries would go up thirty-four percent, benefits would go up fifty-seven percent if this levy passes. Our taxes would go up sixteen percent. Senior citizens, residents, landlords, businesses, all would eat the increase. And landlords, I can guarantee you, will pass that on to their tenants, their consumers in Westerville. On average, the tax increase will be six hundred and eight dollars a year, which equates to twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars over the next twenty years. Seventy percent of residents had an increase in their school property taxes already because of reappraisals. The district picked up two point seven million dollars in permanent tax money on this. There's no job losses, no pay cuts, and no services will be stopped if this levy is defeated. So to recap, the district has fewer students, excess money, poor test results, bullying that doesn't apparently work, at least not in my case, administrative costs that are out of line, we're below average in the percentage of kids with disabilities. Taxes will go up sixteen percent if this passes, but there will be no job losses, pay cuts, or services stopped if this levy is defeated. We know more money doesn't give us better results. We cannot reward the board with more money. They must be held accountable for their actions and results. Transfer back the thirty million, revise down the five-year projections, create a plan to address the poor test results, help the kids. Vote no on issue forty-four, and let's defeat this school levy.
Next up is Lindsay Bobb. Welcome.
Good evening. As a lifelong Westerville resident, I have blindly trusted our school board and district leaders and have voted in support of past levies. I wrongly assumed that more money meant better schools. I assumed that our district was spending our tax dollars wisely and doing their job of seeing to the education of our children. However, after sitting through the levy presentation in two thousand and nineteen and then reading what this levy request was for, I had a lot of questions and noted plenty of red flags. A little digging into the district's financials turned up evidence of money mismanagement, uncontrolled spending, and unchecked pay increases for admin. What was even more concerning for my research was just how poorly Westerville City Schools is performing compared to other districts. What was even more concerning for my research was just how poorly Westerville City Schools is performing compared to other districts. Yet at no point in time during the levy forums have I heard plans on how the district is planning to tackle the embarrassing lack of proficiency of our students. There was significant discussion, however, about the need for more classrooms and to update the remainder of older buildings. Now that the district has proven that they cannot properly predict enrollment growth, I went searching for current capacity numbers of all the schools and used current enrollment numbers to come up with a quick realization that the two new schools that were recently built to the tune of sixty million dollars of taxpayer money was not only unwarranted, but also a waste of money. Had these funds been used to renovate current buildings, you wouldn't be here asking for more money. Had those funds been used to renovate, oh, I'm sorry. With this knowledge, I couldn't sit quietly, hoping that other residents would take the time to do their own research. I had to share what I had learned. So this past Friday, I had the pleasure of speaking out against the levy at Fourth Friday, and I want to share with you a summary from the conversations I had. I was surprised how many current and retired teachers and spouses of teachers were willing to speak out on this issue. The majority I encountered said that they were not voting for the levy, and those that were, were voting for it, were only doing so out of fear of punishment and retaliation by the district. Everyone agreed that the district administration and our school board needs to be held accountable for the mismanagement and uncontrolled spending of our tax dollars. No one said they thought the levy money would be spent appropriately or that more money would benefit the kids, only that if it didn't get passed, the district would bully parents and teachers with cuts. I don't think the school board, as a school board, I don't think you fully understand how fed up the residents of Westerville are with your poor decisions and inability to properly manage our money. It's no secret that Westerville City Schools has declined. They're barely recognizable from the schools I attended as a child. Residents who don't want to send their children to Westerville schools, but also do not want to leave their homes or the community they've grown up in, have chosen to either homeschool or enroll their kids in one of the many private school options that are seeing incredible growth in their enrollment numbers. Until this district starts making major improvements to student performance and starts to earn back the trust of its residents, you will see continued decline in enrollment, and you'll have a very difficult time getting any future levies approved. On a side note, I would like to take this time to remind our board members that written in Board Policy, under the philosophy of the Board, it states that the Board declares to maintain two-way communications with citizens of the district and that citizens shall be urged to bring their aspirations and concerns about the district to the attention of this body. Also, under the Board's written Code of Ethics and Conduct, you are sworn to encourage ongoing communications among board members, students, staff, and the community. So when I attended the October eighth Town Hall levy meeting at Blinnon Middle School, I was incredibly shocked to see two board members sitting in front of me, attempting to intimidate a resident from speaking out against the levy. And I don't know which was sadder, the fact that you two thought that you could intimidate someone or that we have two people sitting on our board who are petty, unethical, and unprofessional. It's equally concerning when one of these individuals is a current board member of the Westerville Education Challenge, which is an anti-bullying initiative for our schools, yet here she was publicly bullying a resident. This kind of behavior is completely unacceptable, and you both have failed at your job to represent this community. I would like to remind everyone listening that both of their terms expire next December, and the opportunity to vote them out is coming.
Next up, we have Doug Nichols. Welcome.
Good evening, Westerville Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Doug Nichols. The district treasurer presented you with two levy options this past summer, four point nine mils and three point nine mils. This board chose the highest option with the explanation that there wouldn't need to be any adjustments or cuts to district programs at all. I'm standing up tonight for district residents who will have to make lots of cuts if the levy of the highest amount possible that you chose passes, along with a combined bond issue. I'm standing up for seniors living on retirement and Social Security. I'm standing up for the over forty percent of students and their families in the district who are at poverty level. I'm standing up for hard-working Westerville District taxpayers living paycheck to paycheck. I'm standing up for people living in apartments whose landlords will have no choice but to pass the incredible increase in taxes on to their tenants in the form of rent increases. I'm standing up for students and teachers. Teachers only receive the two point seven percent raise on a one-year contract extension. District administrators making over six figures receive six percent and above pay raises. My daughter-in-law is a teacher in a different district. Teachers may need to protect students from a school shooter at any time. Those compensation packages are not correctly balanced, in my opinion. From the two thousand twenty-three master appraisal, the average property value increase in the Westerville Schools Tax District was thirty-eight percent. I asked the board at the October fourteenth meeting with no response from any board members, so tonight I'll ask again. Would those board members who voted yes on July eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to place the levy and bond issue on the ballot be willing to publicly say, were their property values more than the thirty percent, thirty-eight percent average, at the thirty-eight percent average, or less than the thirty-eight percent average? And also, by what percentage did your properties increase in value? This past June, I began emailing the Westerville Board of Education president to ask various questions about the superintendent situation. I wanted to know answers to questions like, how could the district afford to hire two superintendents simultaneously for four and a half months and give the one who the district accused of ethics violations a fifty thousand dollar payout, while at the same time the district was claiming to be short on funds and needed to place a levy on the November ballot? Did the district structure the former superintendent's resignation in such a way so that students and taxpayers will get back any of his four and a half months of salary or fifty thousand dollar payout if the Ohio Ethics Commission finds him guilty? The Westerville Board of Education president and the board refused to answer those questions in a public way or make a statement explaining their actions in greater detail to the taxpayers. By my calculations, four and a half months of a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar salary is eighty-six, six thousand dollars, two hundred, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Add another fifty thousand dollars on to that, and you get a hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That's an amount of money that if the district could get it back, or wouldn't have had to pay it to begin with, could do the kids in the district a lot of good. What Westerville taxpayers need from their Board of Education is financial wisdom. You are asking taxpayers with the levy and bond issue to trust you with millions and millions of dollars. District taxpayers trusted the Board of Education in two thousand nineteen with millions and millions of dollars by approving a levy and bond issue. This past June, this board transferred thirty million dollars from the operating budget to a special capital projects fund. If voters approved the levy and bond issue on this ballot, what would stop this board several months down the road from transferring thirty million more dollars from the operating budget, which is intended for the kids in their classrooms, and transfer it to another special capital fund? And, you know, for whatever the district thinks up, like stadium locker rooms and concession stands. Finally, in recent board meetings, the Westerville Board of Education president has warned a public speaker that he would be removed for his comments. There does not appear to be any authority in the board's written policy PO zero one six nine point one entitled Public Participation at Board Meetings for the Board President to do that. There is a clearly defined process involving the entire board for creating and amending board policies. We saw that over the summer and fall with the homeless student policy and recently with the RTRI policy. No board president or board member has the sole authority to just snake up a policy rule and then voila, that's the new rule. Further, it's my understanding and observation that this board operates under Robert's Rules of Order. I would suggest that board members have a responsibility to speak up, especially when a fellow board member's actions, be it the president or anyone else, involve a public speaker and their constitutional rights, which each Board of Education member take an oath to uphold. Thank you for your time this evening.
Next up, we have Mindy Dreier. Welcome.
Well, good evening. My name is Mindy Dreier, and I am a long-time resident of this wonderful city of Westerville. When I say long time, I've probably lived here longer than most of you have been alive, maybe not you. Also, a very proud graduate of Westerville North High School, Walnut Springs, and Mark Twain. Anytime this district has asked me to do anything, I have been all in. In fact, just a few weeks ago, Mark Twain asked me to speak at their fiftieth year anniversary. I went back, and I loved it. I got to see so many of my teachers that were there who also came back. I've loved this city. Aside from being a long-time resident of Westerville, I've also been a long-time member of the media in local TV news, and I also host a Sunday afternoon radio show on six-ten WTVN. Well, a few weeks ago, one of our topics was Life Wise Academy. And I'm sure you know where I'm going with this, because it was a big issue in our city and in your district. The one thing I prided myself on, being a member of the media, and you don't always get this, no offense, Channel Ten, I don't mean this towards you at all, but a lot of times in the media, you don't get both sides. And I have taken pride in being fair and being balanced across the board. On our radio show, my co-host, Michaela Hutton, and I were talking about Life Wise, and it was the Sunday before you were going to take a vote. And we just wanted to know why, what was going on, what could be so terrible about a parent-approved program that in so many instances, you need a little more God in our lives? And in schools where there's so much trouble, you just had a whole presentation to try to make schools safer. So it was a big discussion we had on the air. Someone from Life Wise called in. Me trying to be fair and balanced, I reached out to the superintendent's office, and I called and left a message. I waited a few days. I heard nothing back, nothing. So I waited a few more days. I'm like, I'm gonna call again, because I want them to have a chance to give your opinion of why, why you voted. Not one person voted for the academy, for the program. One person was abstained. But I just wanted to give you an opportunity, because that's how I think things should be done, fairly and balanced. So no one called me back, so I called again. And I even said it doesn't have to be in superintendent. If anyone on the board wants to call, we will give you your opportunity. I heard nothing. That's not good enough. How many of you are up there right now, and there's one of me? Not one of you took the time to call me back? I think it's wrong. I think I was just, gosh, just so disappointed in a district that I've loved forever. I think you guys can do better. I think that the media deserved some type of an answer. One thing I've learned in the media too, after so many years, when people don't speak to the media, they're trying to hide something. It does yourself a justice to give yourself a voice. When you don't, it doesn't look good. That's all I wanted. And I, my, my offer is still open. If you want to call me back or email me if someone, I will be more than willing to put that on the air. I'm a fair person. That's it.
Thank you. That concludes our public commenting period. Next up, we have board comments. Who'd like to go first?
Thank you, President. I just wanted to take a moment to sincerely thank everyone who made financial contributions, all of our donors, staff, students. It's just so important that we're able to come together and raise money for such important causes, and so I just wanted to vocalize my gratitude on that matter. Thank you.
All right. I have a few things this evening, so I wanted to talk a little bit about some legislative updates. The State Senate is back in session on November thirteenth, and the State House is back in session on November twentieth, and they will be considering a myriad of bills that will affect public education in their lame duck session. There has not been a published agenda for these yet, so keep everybody posted, but that is going to come shortly after the election where they are back in session. Speaking of the state legislature, I wanted to make mention, I don't know if it was mentioned last week or not, but state legislature tucked into HB two, which was an allocation of federal funds from COVID to local community projects, a five million dollar earmark approved for private school infrastructure projects. Public money for private schools. That, to me, was very interesting. It is, you know, I think the community projects, some of the community projects that are noted that should be receiving funding are things like transportation updates, convention center improvements, not for a private school to add on to the school that they have currently, not with public funds. So it's these types of moves by the state legislature in support of private education that continue to force local public school districts, like us, to go back to the ballot box. Everything is more expensive now than it was five years ago. The cost to retain good teachers, the cost to retain good staff, the electricity bills, like, everything is more expensive. I would love to never have to vote to do a levy ever again. The state legislature is what prevents that from happening. It is the state legislature, and anybody who thinks otherwise is kidding themselves. So I would like to just make mention the net of that. I don't have any disrespect for people choosing private schools. Families want to take their kids to other schools. They have every, every reason that they can do that. But these schools do not have the same accountability, nor the same measures built in as public schools do. And that's a fact. Also wanted to make note, speaking of public money for private education, that the final numbers are in from the vouchers from last school year, nearly a billion dollars. Nine hundred and seventy point seven million dollars were allocated through vouchers to private and charter schools. And again, I don't have a problem with people choosing that route, but I don't believe public money should be spent on private, private education. They do not have the same level of accountability, educational or financial. So those are just some updates legislatively and with our public dollars. Lastly, in the updates, Westerville, who is part of the vouchers hurt Ohio lawsuit that is challenging the constitutionality of the expanded voucher program for almost anyone, regardless of means, to receive public money for private education. That trial date was supposed to be November fourth. Judge Jiza Page in Franklin County has actually delayed this. It is now pushed out to two thousand twenty-five. So we'll have to wait a little bit longer to have our day in court for that lawsuit challenging the constitutionality of the vouchers. And then I just had one last comment. I think one of the speakers tonight mentioned that if we ran ourselves like Olin Tangi ran themselves, that we should have identical outcomes. I just wanted to point out, the socioeconomics of the Westerville City School District and Olin Tangi are not even close to being the same. And like it or not, that does have a big impact on outcomes. So sometimes you have to spend more money and provide more resources to overcome those socioeconomic challenges. So just wanted to point out that you can't just look at each district and say, they have this number of students, they have this number of students. Why isn't it identical? There's a lot of other factors that go into that, and I wanted to make mention. That's it.
Great, thank you. I just want to add one thing on to that, which is that in having conversations in the community, when a group of people, it's been interesting to talk to people who've moved to Ohio recently and are used to how schools are funded in other states. There really are other ways to fund public education than the levy cycle. So let's work on that.
I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues said. I'll just say I agree, and just thank you for coming out tonight. With that, the Board will meet in regular session on Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. at the Early Learning Center, which is here, nine three six East Wind Drive, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight one. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Seven ten.